Good evening, everyone. This is Catherine Kramer, Town Planner for Farmington. I will take a role of our Commissioners and then we can move forward. Barbara Brenneman, Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Michael Gaboulis is absent this evening. Matt Pogson.
Here.
Inez St. James.
Yeah.
Marcy Schwartz.
Here.
Scott Halston.
Here.
John Bibbert.
Here.
Keith Bibbert.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Barbara Brenneman, Chair of the Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission, welcoming you to our zoning commission meeting, September 13th, 2021. At this point, I'd like to make note that Mr. Gaboulis is not here this evening, and the position will be held by Scott Halston for the evening to vote, to listen and vote on anything that comes up this evening. At this point, I'd like to have Inez read the call, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission notices hereby giving that Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, September 13th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. Yezid Vishnyevsky, application for special permit to raise poultry, 19 hens, at 8 Coppermine Road, R30 Zone. Kirk Degel, application for special permit for expansion of home at 36 Red Coat Lane, R30 OS Zone. 402 Farmington Avenue LLC, application for special permit for blasting and rock crushing to construct multifamily development at lots 40 and 40B1 Farmington Avenue, also known as 8231 and 9249 Farmington Avenue to the rear of 406 Farmington Avenue, SIF Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the Town of Farmington's website A copy of this proposal is online at https://www.farmington-ct.org/government/town-plan-zoning-commission-public-hearing-documents or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 25th day of August, 2021. Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Barbara Brenneman, Chair.
Thank you. I'll begin the evening's meeting with the new business, number one, Damien Handa, sign application for property located at 838 Farmington Avenue.
Tim, I open this up to you to present the application.
Yes, hi, how are you? Yeah, we're looking to put signage up at our new Lapcore Patient Service Center at 838 Farmington Avenue. We opened this facility, really, back in April, and we had some temporary signage up. We'd like to erect the permanent signage, consist of signage on the facial board of the building as well as on the entryway door and also on the monument side by the roadway. I believe you probably have the signage plan of what we're looking at. Yes, you do, and it pretty much shows what we're looking to do. The current monument sign is pretty much filled out. It's my understanding that the owner is looking to erect a new sign. I believe they may have already received approval for that, but that won't be for another year or so. So they've given us permission to take over that oval sign on the left of the monument sign that used to read, well, still does read Epicure Shopping Center, and we would instead place a Lapcore logo in that area.
Commissioners, questions? Start with Patrick.
No, no questions.
Matt?
No questions.
Inez?
No questions.
Scott?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
John?
No questions.
Did I get everybody? I think I did.
Marcy.
Marcy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marcy. I apologize.
All right, but I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no questions, I'll bring it to a vote, please. Any motion to approve?
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the sign application from Damien Handa for property located at 838 Farmington Avenue as presented.
You have a second, please?
Scott Halston, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? Motion's carried, thank you. On business number two, Armco Sign Company Incorporated, sign application for property located at 8887 Southeast Road, adjacent to 1599 Southeast Road.
Mark?
Hello.
Yep.
Yeah, can you hear? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just had a problem with my volume. I didn't hear what you said prior to me saying, can you hear me? But I guess you called the application. So what we're doing is we are going to be upgrading the signs at the courtyard by Marriott, which is both in Farmington and in Newington. The building itself is in Newington. The ground signs, of which there's two of them, detached signs are in Farmington, and that's the reason that we're before the board right now. They presently have two externally, so they're lit by ground lights, signs. One of them is on the east end of the property, very close to the Newington town line, and that one is being shown right now on the screen, which is, the proposed sign that's going up there is 16 square feet, which is pretty similar to what they have right now. They have a shade under 15 right now. The other sign, which is not at the driveway, but it's at the western portion of the property, on the PDF, it's listed as being seven foot tall. But the only reason for that is because, for some reason, when it was put up 15 years ago, they have a foot of clearance between the bottom of the sign and the ground. I don't know what the reasoning behind that is. But in any event, that sign is actually six foot one by 610, and so it's 42 square feet, and it's being replaced in the same location with a sign that's 40 square feet. And you can see the depiction of that. Originally, we were, they wanted to do internally illuminated, but when it was discovered that that's not allowed and that there already are provisions for external illumination, I revised the drawing and sent it in. Both signs are going to maintain the same setback that they have now from the road, which the sign on the east end is 19 and a half feet back from the road. The sign on the western end is about 29 feet back. And in that packet that I provided with my application was the original site plan approval. And unfortunately, I can't bring it up on my computer right now because it's, there it is. And that had both signs shown on the actual site plan itself. There you go, there's the east sign. There's the west one, which was put up a little higher than what it was approved at, but I guess that's a moot point. Our sign is not going to be, it's not going to look like short pants, like the one that's up there now is. It's going to be flushed to the ground, like it's, and with the mulch and the same landscaping around it like it was intended to be initially. And that's pretty much it.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners, questions? Patrick?
No questions.
Matt?
No questions.
Inez?
No questions.
Marcy?
No questions.
Scott?
No questions.
Keith?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
Thank you. Any motion to approve, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the application, sign application from Armco Sign Company Incorporated for property located at 887 Southeast Road, adjacent to 1599 Southeast Road as presented.
And this is Marcy Schwartz, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion's carried, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, have a good night.
You too. Number three, the next, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven applications, they're all basically asking for recommended hearing dates. That's what we're going to be, the motion is going to be on every one of them is for a recommended hearing date. So I'm going to read them as we go. Number three, Old Mill Commons LLC. We accept an application for reapproval of a special permit approved in November 9th, 2015, November 15th, 2017, and September 23rd, 2019, for development of 268 multifamily dwellings at 19 Perry Street in a UC zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October 13th, 2021. Need a motion to accept? We're accepting the recommended hearing date.
Sorry, this is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Old Mill Commons LLC for reapproval of special permit approved November 9th, 2015, November 15th, 2017, and September 23rd, 2019, for development of 268 multifamily dwellings at 19 Perry Street, UC zone, and schedule public hearing with a recommended date of October 13th, 2021.
You have a second, please?
Patrick Carrier, a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion's carried. Number four, Ed Corrello, accept an application for special permit for accessory structure more than 750 square feet at 41 Eli Road in the R80 zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October 13th, 2021. You have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Ed Corrello for special permit for accessory structure less than 7, excuse me, greater than 750 square feet at 41 Eli Road, R80 zone, and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October 13th, 2021.
You have a second, please?
Patrick Carrier.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Calpech Row, an application, accept an application for special permit to raise poultry, 10 chickens at 759 Avenue with an R20 zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of October 13th, 2021. You have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Calpech Row for special permit to raise 10 chickens at 759 New Britain Avenue, R20 zone, and schedule public hearing with a recommended date of October 13th, 2021.
You have a second, please?
This is Marcy, this is Marcy Schwartz, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion's carried. Newport Realty Group LLC, accept an application for change of zone from R20 to SA, special permit and site plan for active adult development located at 8677 Plainville Avenue and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of September 27th, 2021.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Newport Realty Group LLC for change of zone from R20 to SA, special permit and site plan for active adult development located at 8677 Plainville Avenue for public hearing, recommended date of September 27th, 2021.
You have a motion? Second, please?
Scott Halston, I second.
Take your pick, who's going to have it?
Go ahead.
Scott Halston, I second. I snuck it in. Sorry, Marcy.
Aye.
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 Abstention? Motion carries, thank you. CLP LLC, accept a reapplication for change of zone from BR to Special Innovation Floating Zone and Site Plan Approval to redevelop the existing hotel to a mixed-use multifamily residential commercial development, allowing for coffee shop and/or restaurant bar flex office area and meeting and event conference uses located at 15 Farm Springs Road and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of September 27th, 2021. May I have a second? A motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from CLP Farmington LLC, and it's a reapplication for change of zone from BR to Special Innovation Floating Zone and Site Plan Approval to redevelop the existing hotel to a mixed-use multifamily residential commercial development allowing for a coffee shop and/or restaurant/bar flex office area and meeting/event/conference uses located at 15 Farm Springs Road and schedule a public hearing with a recommended date of September 27th, 2021.
Thank you. You have a second?
This is Marcy Schwartz, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Number eight, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, accept an application for text amendment to the zoning regulations to Article 2, Section 14B.16, Tattoo and Body Piercing Studio, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of September 27th, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission for text amendment to the zoning regulations to Article 2, Section 14B.16, Tattoo and Body Piercing Studio, and schedule public hearing with a recommended date of September 27th, 2021.
Thank you. You have a second?
Patrick Carrier, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion? All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's carried, thank you. Town Planning and Zoning, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, accept an application for text amendment to the zoning regulations to remove Article 4, Section 15, fire protection, and schedule a public hearing, recommended hearing date of September 27th, 2021.
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission for text amendment to the zoning regulations to remove Article 4, Section 15, fire protection, and schedule public hearing with a recommended date of September 27th, 2021.
You have a second, please?
This is Marcy Schwartz, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries, thank you. Now move on to public hearings. The first public hearing is Jersey Wisnewski, application for special permit to raise poultry, 19 hens, excuse me, at 8 Coppermine Road in an R30 zone.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, this is Keith Bibbert, and I'll be sitting this one out there, my neighbors.
Okay, Keith, thank you.
Sure. We don't have, he's an alternate, so we don't have, we don't have any more.
Let's turn it over to the applicant Joanna in Jersey.
Um, so we're here just to get approval for 19 chickens. This is only going to be to raise for eggs and fertilizer for his garden.
Do you, okay, you have a footprint of where you're going to place it?
So this is the coop here, and then there.
Do you want some description on that and its location in the yard, please?
It's all the way in the back.
I'm going to ask the Commissioners for questions. Any questions? Patrick?
Well, I see in the, the agenda review, it says staff has been working with the homeowner to clean up the rear portion. Yeah, so can you tell me more about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So staff went out on the site and met with the applicant and I was wanting to suppose, on Friday, and the site had been cleaned up and is in good conditions. Town staff does not have any concerns about the status of their rear yard and the chickens.
Okay, and I also saw that it was brought to your attention by someone else's, is that, is somebody complaining or, or, you know, is everybody aware of it and okay with it?
It was visible from the, excuse me, the rail trail, and therefore it was brought to our attention, and we noticed that it was unpermitted. There, it wasn't a specific complaint, and I'm apologizing. I'm stuck in this.
Okay, yeah, that's it for questions for me. Thank you.
Matt?
No questions.
Inez?
Um, so I walk in that area, and I'm trying to think, and it's probably a totally different house, but when you, in that area, I think somebody else has chickens or had chickens, and it, I mean, if you have the right timing, it really smells bad. I don't know.
People on Dupree Avenue, I believe, have chickens.
Okay, are we doing, is that, I'm just thinking, I don't have chickens, right? 19, and I don't know the other resident, how many chickens they have, but I think, you know, you can see them, but it's a problem. I mean, it's a pretty strong odor.
Oh, I'm up on the outside. Yeah, so the chickens are up here.
And it's a different house than the one, you, you guys know what I'm talking about, or am I the only one?
No, we know.
Okay.
We figured it out.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just, 19 seems a lot, but, you know, the property is, what, half an acre? I don't know how much time, how much time, how much space they need to roam around. I'm trying to place this, I think that's a coop, the drawing that's online.
Yes, and it's gated as well, so they have enough space to walk around.
Oh, okay, so it's enclosed, too?
Yep, the section where, you know, when it gets dark out, it gets closed up, and then, you know, in the morning, my dad goes out, lets them all out, so they're not in the coop, you know, 24 hours a day. They're outside in a gated area.
So is the coop the grayed-out area? That's the coop, and then their area to roam is to the right of it? Why is some of it dark or gray and some of it, that's, I'm kind of confused about what the sketch is?
That's the shed.
Sorry?
That's the shed that he just, you just pointed to?
I'm not.
Or which area are you referring to?
So on the sketch that you, with, that came with the application, you have a grayed-out area, and then you have a white area.
Uh, we didn't.
Screen.
That's a screen area, the gray.
The gray.
What do you mean, screen area?
Um.
Like fence, around the fence, they go, and, and they down here, and that's the screen, and that's the, that's the little coop, and that's bigger coop.
And the middle section is just fenced in, like a screened area.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Fran, can I go back? So is this different property or the same property? The, this, this request, is it the same property that has chickens? They were not permitted?
This, this house, this house has chickens currently. They have not been permitted. This application is for their special permit. They'll be in compliance with this permit. That's the objective here.
I know I sound a little strange, but is it the same house that, like, sounds like maybe there's some issues to upkeeping the chickens?
So. So we had concerns about some of the debris and the condition of where the chickens were placed. Town staff has been working with the applicant and went back to the site on Friday. The site has been cleaned up a lot. I actually have some photos that I can share with you all. And these were taken on Friday. So you can see they posted their sign, the chickens, it's cleaned up. This is represented from internal control. All the chickens had water. The coops have been cleaned. There's still a little bit of materials on the side, but all within the backyard and not visible from the road, so.
And have the neighbors been contacted? Any comments from the neighbors?
No public comment at this point has been received by town staff.
Thank you.
Patrick?
I already asked my questions. I'm, I don't have anymore.
Okay. Marcy?
I am good now, thank you.
Okay, Scott?
Well, no questions.
John?
So let me understand this. The chicken coops and the chickens were in place without permission, without permit? And, and the town staff noticed it, brought it to the attention of the owners that they needed permits, and has worked with the neighbors to clean up the area?
Correct.
And now they're coming back, so I'm assuming they're coming back with the tacit approval of the town staff to saying that it seems to be a correct area for a chicken coop.
Correct. That is correct.
And there's been no complaints from any of the neighbors?
I have not been made aware of any complaints from the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
This is Barbara Brenneman. The only comment I have is that the applicant made the presentation that it was 19 chickens. It can only be hens, can't be roosters. The applicant aware that roosters are not allowed?
Correct.
There are no roosters there?
Correct.
No, no roosters.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, and so at this point, I would welcome anyone who has signed into the Zoom meeting to raise your hand. If you. And so at this point, I would welcome anyone who has signed into the Zoom meeting to raise your hand if you wish to make a comment either in favor of or in opposition to this application. Please raise your hand on the Zoom and we'll recognize you. Um, Keith, you have your hand raised?
Am I, I'm allowed to speak as a member of the public, right, by saying this out?
You refuse to excuse himself from the application.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, am I allowed to speak as a member of the public or completely? Yeah, I, so I live uh four houses down and I run on the trail frequently, which does go right behind this house. Um, very good neighbors. I, I have not personally, I've lived there for five years, ever found the chickens to be a nuisance at all. Um, the yard is well maintained. They seem like very conscientious neighbors and as a neighbor, I'm in favor of them keeping the chicken coops.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Anyone else?
Again, this is a public comment. If you're interested in making a comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom function. I see no hands raised at this point in time. Last call for uh public comment.
Does the applicant have anything else that'd like to add to their presentation?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. I will close this public hearing. May I have a motion, please?
Um, can we discuss it first or do we make a motion?
Get the motion and then we'll discuss it.
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the application from Yezhia Wisnewski for special permit to raise nineteen hens at eight Coppermine Road, R thirty zone as presented.
Is there a second, please?
Patrick Carrier, I second.
Discussion?
Um, so this is Inez again. I just the, the number, I guess, is like my worry, right? We uh, is, is it possible um to say that um, and I don't know if it's just me or other commissioners when I weigh in, but as uh, I don't know what, how long chickens live, but um nineteen, in my opinion, is a lot for that space. Is it possible to um limit, like when they die or get killed, whatever, that they're not replaced? Is that uh, I would like to see something like that.
I think the regulation calls for a maximum of twenty.
So we, wow, okay, so we already allowed twenty, okay. I thought it was less. I, I guess I'm wrong, okay.
We, we've tried to keep it lower than that unless it's on a large piece of land. But twenty is the maximum they can have. And they have nineteen, as long as it's only hens and no roosters.
Okay, so the thing I did not include, tell me if I need to remove it and we stated is, you know, if in a year, uh, you know, neighbors, they're different neighbors and they have an issue due to noise, whatever, that there's a review period in a year?
Is that standard? The review periods for special permit?
If there's complaints, we can reassess.
Yeah. Uh, is that on every special permit if there are complaints within the first year? For chickens? Routine.
It's routine, okay, perfect.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, Kirk Dagle, application for special permit of expansion of home at thirty-six Red Coat Lane in an R thirty O S zone.
Kirk and Amy, I welcome you to present your application to the commission.
Uh, Matt, Madam Chair, I'm gonna sit this one out. I don't know if uh you were told that. This is Patrick Carrier.
Okay, wait a minute now, I'm gonna have to make, we have made Scott the replacement for Mike. We're gonna have to make is Keith next?
Uh, John.
John is next. John Viber, you replace Patrick on this application, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Dagle, you may go forward.
Alright, so the proposed addition is in compliance with the regulations.
Can I speak up or get closer to the mic, please?
Okay, the proposed addition is in compliance with the regulation. It is under the seventy-five percent requirement. The garage will be thirty-six feet from the road, keeping in line with the existing structure. The driveway will be seventy feet from the stop sign on the corner. And as a ZBA mem- uh board member stated on July nineteenth at a ZBA hearing, it is not fair that a person who has a modest home is not allowed to build a larger garage. So we are being penalized for having a smaller house to start well. There are larger houses in the neighborhood.
Mr. Dagle, I think our computer is frozen. We've lost audio. Is that the same for others?
I think it's his computer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed, yep.
Okay, we'll give him a moment to, to come back.
Looks like he's back.
What happened? We good?
Yes, we can hear you again.
Okay.
Please continue.
Sixty perc- sixty-five percent of the houses in the neighborhood are two stories. Since we are expanding our home to accommodate the classic vehicles, trucks and motorcycles we own to keep them out of the elements and protected, to keep them from being parked in the street as opposed to expanding our home for antique furn- uh furnishings or artwork, et cetera, we are being frowned upon. We have had our vehicles broken into more than ones and we would like to keep them secure and protected. It will not look like a commercial building. The view from Red Coat uh will look very similar to the existing garage at twenty-five Whispering Rod. And the view from Whispering, uh Whispering Rod will look similar to this thirty Silver Smith uh which has a three-car garage. Uh, there is a large garage door on the corner of Red Coat and West District as well as ten Red Coat and nine West District that have a room above the garage as well. We are not running a business. Yes, I do foundations, cannot pour foundation from my house. Uh, I own a pickup truck, not a cement truck. As you can see from the photos, one of the neighbors had taken. And the trailer is not a work trailer, it's to haul my cars around. I do use the address for my business, mail only. The business vehicles are parked stored in Bristol. There are other homes in the neighborhood similar in total size. At six Silver Smith, you have forty-seven hundred and fifty-four total square footage. Ha- habitable and unhabitable. And then at the twenty-five Whispering Rod, you have forty-seven twenty-five total square feet. And at forty-four Red Coat, you have a total of forty-six sixty square feet. And at fifteen Silver Smith, total area is forty-six thirty-nine. The neighbors at the red, at forty Red Coat Lane came to our house, walked the property with me, stated they had no objections to the garage addition, even asked if they could have the wood from any trees to be cut. Then when it came time to submit the application, they uh indicated that they did not want to have the addition on Whispering Rod since they like to sit on their deck and look into our backyard, which is kinda creepy. And they have been giving us, uh, been given false information about the addition to others in the neighborhood. And have not even certain that this is their primary home or they are even full-time residents of the state of Connecticut as both of their vehicles are registered in Maryland and their mailing address is Maryland. In addition to not paying registration fees to the state of Connecticut, they're not paying property tax at the town of Farmington for those vehicles. Farmington will get the taxes, revenue from all our vehicles in addition to the increase in the property taxes of our home after the expand. And that's what we have. So if you go to the plot plan, if you can go through a plot plan, you'll see that the garage is plenty far from the road and plenty far from the stop sign. Who scrolls? Do I scroll or do you guys scroll?
I'm controlling the screen.
There you go. Yep, so if you see, enlarge it there. So that lead edge of the garage is thirty-six feet from the road, that edge right there that you're coming across the front there, yeah. So there's no way it's gonna interfere with the stop sign. Some people are worried about the garage obstructing the view from the stop sign, which makes no sense because the garage goes to the back of the house. It doesn't come off the side of the house. And that's what we'd like to get approved.
That's your presentation, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Go to the commissioners. Start with Matt.
Um, a clarifying question, uh, it almost looks like there's a wall, but I'm not sure if the new garage and the old garage will be completely open to each other. What's the um, will they be separated?
Yes, there's a dividing wall between, yes. Yes, correct.
Okay, what's the ceiling height on the garages?
Oh, I don't have that in front of me. The ceiling height in the garage is soft. It's, it's gonna have a uh it's probably gonna be fourteen feet high to the, to the flat of the ceiling in the garages.
Okay, so that's.
The door, the door is ten feet high.
Yep.
Garage door and on the, on the, on the other side there.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's rooms above on this, as you could see from the plans, there's rooms above on this part of the garage that you're facing now. And then there's, there's a yeah, so then the other, the other bay is opened up to the top there, yes.
Right, so you're planning on having a lift in there? For the fourteen-foot ceiling, yeah?
Yes, yes.
And currently, you're talking about housing classic cars that you, you have?
Yes, I have, yes, I have two classic cars and I have two Harleys, yes.
Okay. Um, and there have been complaints about there being construction equipment. I know that your truck, you're saying is uh we saw pictures, somebody had sent us pictures for our review. There's no Connecticut DOT number on the side of that truck. Is that not a commercial vehicle? That's a personal vehicle?
Yes, personal vehicle, yes. No DOT numbers.
Is that uh registered with your business? Is that?
Yes.
So that truck is registered for your business?
Yes.
Okay, and is the trailer registered for your business or as a personal, uh, like a camp trailer or is it a commercial trailer?
No, it's just a car trailer. So there's security cars around. My, my classic cars, they bring it to car shows and stuff like that.
Okay, you're talking to a classic car guy, so I understand that. That's totally understandable to me. Um, but I'm trying to envision what this space will be used for. It sounds like the two garages will be separate. It's not gonna be like a drive-through situation where you can bring a whole, like a larger vehicle all the way through. Um.
And there's another petition wall in the middle there.
Right.
See the dividing, the dividing wall where the stairs are, got another dividing wall in the other area there.
Right. Um. The other question that I had pertaining to this is actually for um for office staff, uh, do you, you, you put in the review that it was uh R, would you say R thirty zone but with open space? Can you clarify that?
So open space subdivision.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
R thirty open space subdivision. It's the, the zoning uh district designation.
So what does the open space portion of that mean? Because I'm, I, I normally know what open space means, but is it in direct connection to this parcel?
Right, so when they do an open space subdivision, the lots are smaller and more of the land in the subdivision is will provide it for open space. So although it might be an R thirty lot, there might be characteristics of it that are smaller than an R thirty. Um, because during the time of subdivision, um, land was given uh back and as open space.
Okay, um, although this is not a factor with residential properties, do you know what the pervious coverage on this property is going to become, the impervious coverage versus pervious coverage? Or is that not something that, I know it's not a residential topic typically, so it may not have been even really evaluated?
So it wasn't assessed by town staff, but it meets all of the regulations as far as uh the percent of um habitable versus uh non-habitable. I'll open up, I'll open up the zoning um file so we can just look at the aerial and you can kind of picture what the new uh impervious would look, would take up.
While you're bringing that up, is there anything on the um plan that's going to show how the water from the roof is going to be taken care of?
Yes, on the plot plan, there is an infiltrator designed on the end. We, through that, there is, there's a roof infiltrator that's gonna be in the, in the ground over there on the right-hand side, if you look at the plot.
Yeah, I thought that there was like a gray water catch over there or something, but it, does it have a is it just a honeycomb or is that just going into, how, what, what's the setup of that? I know it's not engineered on there, so.
Right, that's the only thing we haven't gone over yet, but whatever it's gonna take to get it to, to be in place, we'll just do whatever is needed.
Okay, and if we could see that aerial, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll go back. Um, so Matt, you can see here, it's extending this wall and then out to here.
What about where that tree is, correct, yeah?
Right, so.
Are you able to zoom in at all anymore? I normally have a second computer set up, but it wasn't functioning this afternoon, so I.
No, I apologize, my assist closes uh the G I, that's the aerial. Sometimes if you go onto your Google Maps, you can get a little closer. But yeah, the extension of the garage is to about this area of the tree where you can see on the the trees right here.
Yeah, normally I have a whole nother, a whole nother computer set up and I just can't see anything other than what you're showing me tonight, so that's where it's tricky. But um alright, at this time I have no other questions. Uh, I think that's, that's it for right now. Thank you.
Anyas?
Uh, thank you. Catherine, can you go back to the aerial? I thought there are some wetlands in that neighborhood or do they not come down that far?
Because they're between the houses.
So they're back here, yeah. Um, but there's effort to take the roof leaders and make sure that water gets infiltrated in.
Okay, I was just, since you brought it up, I appreciate it. Did you say something, sorry?
Nope, no, happy to share.
Yeah, no, um, you know, so I reviewed everything and then the letters started coming in. You know, everyone has an opinion, of course, and this is why we have these meetings. Um, the pictures don't just, um, this is just my observation from the pictures, you know. Um, if I did not have the pictures, but it definitely seems like that the business is being run out of this uh location or maybe that's just a little unsettling, so thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Dagle, but uh those pictures kind of look like the trailer is attached to the truck and, I mean, on as the day you were going to.
I was going to a car show.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
That, that's why I wanna build a garage. I don't have to have it out in the street. If I had the garage, uh, that would all been inside. I would have loaded up that morning.
Yeah, so that was uh, that's what kind of um things started happening. I don't, you know, as presented, um, I don't have any questions, but uh definitely the pictures to me um were troubling for that neighborhood, but uh, thank you.
My other trucks that I do have for my, my job job is, is foundations. I don't know if you've ever seen foundations being built in your neighborhood, but the trucks that are, are a much larger scale. It's, it's actually a crane truck and there's actually a rack truck with panels on it. So that's completely, that, those, those are not gonna fit in the garage or not gonna be in the yard either. I have a yard in Bristol that those are stored at.
It's definitely a residential neighborhood and um, you know.
I understand. It's a beautiful neighborhood. I understand that also, but I'd like to keep all of my things in one place. That's all I'm trying to do. I got cars and motorcycles.
Thank you. No other questions.
Okay.
Marcy?
Marcy, I think you may be muted.
Thank you, sorry. Um, I'm trying to understand, or the question I don't have answered is, where is the trailer truck stored?
The truck is, I, I have it at a house, at a home in the driveway. The truck is, I have it at a house, at a home in the driveway here.
Will it fit in one of the garage?
Yes, it will. That's for the, that's for the bigger door area.
Okay, I, I, I don't know, I'm not living there, so I'm just asking a question, so the hostility is unnecessary, but I'm, I'm asking if that truck, which is now on the street and seems to annoy people, is going to be housed in a garage?
Yes, it's gonna be housed in the garage, correct.
All right, that was my question, thank you.
Scott?
So you had mentioned that you would be working on cars in those garages. Is there any potential for noise that's gonna carry across the street? Are there ways to mitigate that?
Yes, keep the doors closed and keep it as quiet as.
You will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
John?
Uh, who owns this property?
Amy Blades.
Uh, so, how, how is Amy and you related?
We're a couple.
Okay, that, that's fine, that's all I needed. And, so, uh, this is your, uh, house as well?
Correct, yes.
No further questions?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. And so I would invite anyone who is in the audience on the Zoom meeting to raise your Zoom hand so you can be recognized for either opposition or support of this application.
Barbara, Keith, can I just ask a question before public comment?
Excuse me?
This is Keith Viver. Can I just ask a question before public comment?
Yes.
So the only thing I saw, um, from some of the neighbors was concerned about the, the time period that they feel like there's, um, so I understand cars are your hobby and I totally respect that. I know, like Matt said, he's a, a car hobbyist as well. Um, but one of the concerns was that when you are working on the cars, it seems like it's happening later in the evening, which makes sense because I know people work during the days, so you're probably doing your hobbies later at night. Um, and so the, the concern that I read was that with more garages, more potential for, you know, more work later in the evenings, and it was another noise concern. So I know you just spoke with Scott about keeping the doors closed, but is there an hour that you stop working on the cars normally or?
Yeah, you can, we can be done working on the cars by eight o'clock, you know, the latest, you know? The, uh, right now, just, it's, I haven't worked on the cars in the yard at all yet. I haven't had the cars home. You know what I mean? So the noise that they're hearing, it's not, it's not done by me.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask about that, appreciate it.
No trouble. Yeah, I, I like to sleep too, so I, I'm not all hours of the night. I, I do foundations for a living. I do come home quite tired. I'm not up, I'm fifty-seven years old, so I'm not up all hours of the night working on cars.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's time for public comment. Please, anyone in the audience on the Zoom meeting that would like to make a comment either in favor or in opposition to this application, please do so by raising your hand now and you will be recognized.
Sarah.
You need to identify yourself with your name and your address, please.
Sarah Ringa, I, um, you're welcome to provide public comment. Just unmute yourself, state your name and address, please.
Hi, this is Sarah Ringa. I'm at seventeen Whispering Rod Road. And I sent a pretty lengthy letter in my opposition to the building of this additional garage. I have no issue with the addition for the master bedroom. My issue with the garage, as I've stated in the letter, is that I don't think any house in this neighborhood needs five car garages. I think this neighborhood does not, for the characteristics, does not need that. The house that was, uh, referred to, um, that has a larger garage, that is the third garage in that house. So that does not look overly imposing from a residential perspective. When you add this really big addition that seems to overshadow almost double the size of the original house, that does not seem to be in the characteristic of the neighborhood that we would like to maintain here. My other concern that I've raised in my letter is the traffic that can come from this garage and around the bend here where there are many walkers and where there are sometimes other cars parked on the road and people do not slow down as they should and it can be, uh, scary to the walkers. And I see this adding to that challenge. And that's not something that I'm very comfortable with. Um, so I don't like the idea of this larger-than-necessary garage, in my opinion. I think this is over the percentage from what I'm aware of, of what you can add to a dwelling within Farmington's, I think it's thirty percent, or someone can correct me, because this seems to really more than double the size of the living space in this garage, or I don't know if living space is the right word, but space. So I have a concern from the aesthetics perspective as well, and so I will, I'll leave my comments at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else who would like to make comment? Please do so by raising your hand and identifying yourself.
Um, Jose Ruiz, uh, you can now unmute yourself. Please, uh, identify yourself and address the commission with your address.
Thank you very much. This is Jose Ruiz at twenty Whispering Rod Road. Um, I would like to respectfully, uh, express my opposition to the application uh, with regards to the comments that have been made. Uh, I am very concerned about the fact that, you know, the fact that we, you know, the, the larger garage, uh, it's gonna have a, a lift, uh, it's not just for storage. And the comment that was made that, uh, the, you know, in order to mitigate potential noise, the doors are gonna remain closed. Uh, having worked in the auto industry prior to moving to Connecticut for twelve years, um, yes, there are certain things that you could do with, uh, a close environment, but there's plenty of other things that produce a lot of noise for which, uh, because of safety, a close environment, you know, possible. Um, so therefore, um, you know, the concern that I have is with the noise. Uh, I would like to also echo, uh, the concerns about, uh, the traffic, uh, potentially that could increase uh, as, uh, the result. Um, okay, with the, you know, the, you know, office space, um, expansion, you know, the living space uh, expansion, but I'm very concerned about, um, you know, the garage and especially the one that seems to be, you know, um, very large and that it's, it's, it lends itself to, in the future, have quite a bit of work, uh, done there uh, and the noise that it could create. That's the extent of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone else who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand and identify yourself.
Uh, Bill Baruca, um, you can address the question, uh, with your name and address, please.
Bill, Bill Bartuga at fifty Red Coat Lane. Uh, I joined the meeting a, a little bit late, so was there any reading of the, uh, written copies of concern? Or are we, uh, all have to voice them?
You're welcome to read it. I will present them on the screen for the record after, um, the public hearing is, uh, everyone in the, in the Zoom meeting has spoken.
Okay, I, I probably share comments similar to the other residents. A five-car garage in this neighborhood doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood, has more of a representation of a commercial space, uh, has a lot of asphalt presentation. It'll look like a parking lot on the corner. And, uh, it, it, it just is, is, doesn't fit the space. It's appealing to commercial, uh, intent. Even on a resale, uh, somebody to buy the house, it would require, you know, they, they would have to have some reason to have five-car garage, which typically would be, uh, again, a commercial intent. Uh, so if, if that were to, um, be presented in the neighborhood, it would, uh, I think devalue the, uh, uh, the attraction of the neighborhood because most of the houses in the community on the, uh, the three adjacent streets are typically two-car garages proportionally sized to the, uh, square footage of the, the house itself. So I would respectfully, you know, I would, I think we would, you know, vote on denying the application. Certainly the, uh, addition to the house is fine, but not, uh, a modification of five-car garage. And there's my, uh, my written, uh, submission was, uh, articulates the points more precisely. I'm good.
Thank you. Next person would like to speak from the Zoom, please raise your hand and identify yourself.
Robert Eisner, um, you're welcome to unmute yourself. Please state your name and address for the commission.
Good evening. I'm Robert Eisner at eight Trotters Glen. First, I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission members for your time on the commission. Um, as we all know, a fundamental purpose of zoning um, is to ensure compatible and predictable use of land for enjoyment by all. So I think that really is the essence of the concerns that have been raised by many of the neighbors already. Well, I'm not a, um, I don't live in the neighborhood. I do have friends and family that live in the neighborhood. Um, and I did submit a letter to, uh, town planner Catherine Kramer last night. Some of the, the main points, um, in the letter of opposition to this special use, um, permit really is the use of the property. Um, the size of the garage, twenty-eight by fifty, fourteen-foot high, um, five bays in a residential use really screams of commercial use now and in the future. So the decision that is before the commission tonight will have long lasting impacts on the neighborhood. So I think it's important to consider the character of the neighborhood, um, the safety of the neighborhood. If you drive through the neighborhood during the school bus hours, uh, the neighborhood is loaded with children, so an application that will invite additional commercial activity into the middle of a residential neighborhood is certainly a quality of life and safety issue for those in that particular neighborhood. Um, and it also is a precedent that should be avoided throughout town. So for the visuals of the addition that really dictate more commercial in nature than residential in nature, makes it out of character with the rest of the neighborhood and should be um, denied. So my wife and I, Karen Eisner and Robert Eisner, are opposed to this special permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person who would like to speak in, either in favor or in opposition, please do so by raising your hand and identifying yourself.
Uh, we have E Leary. You're welcome to, uh, unmute yourself and state your name and address for, for the commission.
The name is Edward Leary. Address is nineteen Whispering Rod Road. Uh, I and my wife reside four homes down the street from the applicant. And I had prepared a whole series of notes today to discuss my view of it. But I must say that I'm struck by the wisdom and insight of my neighbors who have already spoken and they have taken away or repeated what I had in mind in the first place. So I feel like I'm a bit redundant, but I'd like to thank my neighbors for, uh, expressing what I think are great points. I would ask Mr. Daigle to think about what may happen to his property when he decides to leave. Is he building something that would be so extraordinary that it would have very limited market value to the majority of future buyers? And he may enjoy it, but he may not get a financial reward at the end of this usage if he goes forward with the idea as presented so far. But both my wife and I feel that it is ill-conceived use of a residential piece of property here in our neighborhood. And that's it.
Thank you. Is someone else who would like to speak either in favor or opposition to this application? Please raise your hand on the Zoom and you will be identified.
Um, we have Luke Son at AOL dot com. Please, uh, state your name and address and you may address the commission. Please remember to unmute yourself if I have called, uh, your name, Luke Son at AOL dot com.
Is that us? It's the Quikendals?
Betty Quikendall.
Oh, my husband says he doesn't want to talk. This, my name is Betty Quikendall. I live at fifteen Whispering Rod Road. I've written, we've written a letter with our objections to this application. Uh, I basically want to say that if you look at the dimensions of these garages, there's seventy feet of frontage on Whispering Rod Road. That's huge for this. It's bigger than most of our houses. And I do believe if you add up the square footage, there's more square footage in the two-car garage addition, the three-car garage addition plus the old garage than there is in the house. That means you've got a house attached to a garage. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Please raise your hand on the Zoom and we will identify you, please.
Um, Bill Bartuga, your hand, you re-raised your hand. Do you wish to make another, another comment?
Uh, yes, I just want to accentuate, uh, one of the prior, uh, comments that was made. Um, and I think it's, uh, you know, two, two facts. One is a precedent-setting, uh, you know, situation like this. So once you set a precedent, others could do, you know, something very similar, which would also, uh, distract the character and value of the neighborhood. And, um, the, um, I'm trying to think of the other point I had, so let me, let me, uh, pause for a second on that and, uh, turn the floor back over, but yeah, I, you know, it's, oh, I, the, the, uh, the other point I was trying to make is the, the, uh, the attraction, if it were to be resold, would most likely be a commercial buyer because what else, what other purpose would you have to buy a five-car, a garage that's proportionally not sized to the house itself? So thank you for, uh, yielding the floor again. Appreciate it.
Anyone else who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application on the Zoom, please raise your hand and we'll identify.
There's no further hands raised at this time.
At this time, do we do the letters?
Yes, I will scroll through the letters since there's no. Um, so support. Letter of support from, uh, Jack Tyne and Sarah Smith. Kell Burns. Uh, Garrett Mon. Uh, Brian Greener and Kate Greener. Apologies for my pronunciation and, uh, Maria Brechen. And then we have letters of opposition. So this is from Edward Clerken. Um, Sarah Ringa. Juliana Hotchkiss. Robert, uh, Daisy. Uh, Joan, Joan and William Bartuccia. Uh, Tim Ringette. Edward and Catherine Leary. Eric O'Keefe. Uh, Janet Daisy. Betty and Ellen, um, Quikendall. Edwin Hotchkiss. Mrs. Spotos. This is the corner where the house is to, would be expanded upon. Uh, Jackie and Kurt, uh, Cropland and family. And this is Barbara Kimscum Mendez. And those are the letters of opposition.
Thank you. We'll go to the commissioners. We'll start with Patrick.
Do we need a motion first? I thought we did.
Discuss it first.
Oh, okay.
Uh, yeah, I'm sitting this one out.
Because we have the right to ask the applicant questions. We've had the public speak. We can have the, if there are more questions from the commissioners. Patrick is sitting out and John is sitting in for it. Matt?
I have no other questions at this time. I have some comments when we get to the point of making a vote, but no questions.
I is?
No questions.
Marcy?
Not at this time. Thank you, Bob.
Scott?
No questions, thanks.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
John?
Uh, my only question is, is.
My only question is, is I understand that your hobby is fixing old cars as well as apparently riding motorcycles. Did you have these hobbies before you moved into this house?
Yes, I've been playing with cars since I was 13 years old.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion, please.
This is Inez C. James. I make a motion to approve the application from Kirk Daigle for a special permit for expansion of home at 36 Red Coat Lane, R30O S Zone as presented.
Is there a second?
This is Marcy Schwartz. I second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion? Go back to Matt.
So I want to make this clear to Mr. Daigle because I'm going to have a very interesting vote, at least from my perspective. I have the exact same hobby. I have a complete understanding of why you want the structure that you want. In fact, I'm sure that you're in the same boat that I am, that I'm looking at this garage and it should be bigger than it is if that's your hobby. It should take up more room. It should be bigger than the house. If you have the hobby that we have, then that is kind of how you see things. And I understand that completely and I respect that completely. Unfortunately, in this neighborhood, I'm not sure that it is the right fit. And for those who are concerned that possibly like this would bring in commercial, you know, businesses in the future if the house was sold. You know, I had this discussion when we did our addition on our house and put on the barn that I have connected to the house. And like I've said to other people, if they want to have a great room someday and they just want to close off the barn doors, they can have a beautiful great room that, you know, it could be a huge family room for somebody or a movie room or something. It doesn't have to be a garage. But with that said, I would also say that if you're not welcomed by your neighbors and they're already here to give you a hard time about something, then it may not make your life easy in the future and it may not be worth the fight. So in my perspective, I don't know that I would want to have to go down that route and have that on a daily basis when all you're trying to do is enjoy your hobby. So I normally don't say that much, but this is actually something that is personal to me because I have a dozen classic cars and I have half a dozen tractors and antique farm equipment that I collect. And unfortunately to a lot of people, that's junk that gets hidden behind a fence. But at other times it can actually be collectible and enjoyable and goes to car shows and gets enjoyed by a lot of other people. So with a heavy heart, honestly, I have to say that I'm, I'm not going to go ahead with this application. I will be voting no. But it's not from an understanding of what you're looking for. It's from an understanding of what you deserve and where you should do this is probably not where you are. So that's all I have to say.
Discussion, Inez?
For me, it's an easy one. It's, it's out of character for the neighborhood.
Marcy, discussion?
I have no further discussion. I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, I'll just echo some of the points that Matt and Inez made. I do think it's out of the character and that's a key criteria when we're looking at special permit. And, you know, I don't have that much time on the commission, but to have this much sort of neighbor dissent on an application doesn't set a good precedent for how this will work out if approved for anybody, including Mr. Daigle. And I do appreciate his honesty in answering the questions, but I just don't think it's a fit for the neighborhood.
Keith?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Darren?
I agree. It doesn't fit with the neighborhood.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the application. We've had discussion. We'll take a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstention? Motion is denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next public hearing, 402 Farmington Avenue LLC, application for special permit for blasting to construct multifamily development at lots 40 and 40B1 Farmington Avenue, also known as 8231 and 9249 Farmington Avenue to the rear of 406 Farmington Avenue in an SIF zone. Metro, I turn it over to you to present your application. I put up the.
Thank you. Good evening. This is attorney Tim Hollister representing the applicant. With me online are from Metro are Jeff Sager, Kyle Richards, Ben Tripp, Peter Dunn. We have geotechnical and technical consultants, all of whom you heard from during the residential development application several months ago. We'll introduce them as we go through them. There they are, Deborah Monica, Rob Danielson, Ted Von Rosenving, Jeremy Karen and Megan Raymond. This is a special permit application under Article 4, Section 27 of the zoning regulations for certain types of construction activities. Because this is a public hearing, I'll just note the procedural compliance, the required signs, two of them were posted. The mailing to owners within 200 feet of the subject property mailed and the proof of mailing provided to staff. Of course, the commission has published the appropriate notices and I would also note that we've provided the commission with written permission from the owner of the gas pipeline that traverses the subject property. Just to put the application into perspective for a moment, if you'll excuse the pun, I'm going to drill down on what we're going to do tonight. Back in March and April, when during the hearings on the apartment plan, the applicant, in response to commission and abutting property owner concerns, gave a detailed geotechnical presentation intended to show that there would be no impacts or risk from the closed landfill, from drinking water wells, the gas pipeline or other environmental concerns. And we heard then from the same geotechnical and environmental experts that you're going to hear from, albeit more briefly tonight. I would note that before we closed the hearing on the apartments, even the attorneys for the, the interveners, attorney Ainsworth and attorney Shansky said, well, we agree that this can be constructed safely. I'm not sure they said it in exactly those words, but they didn't contest the geotechnical evidence and then the plan was approved. So tonight's, I would call tonight's application a very particular and specific subset of what you reviewed and approved during January to July of this year, which is earth materials excavation to basically establish the base elevation of the proposed construction of the residential building and the associated parking. You will hear that none of this work is proposed in a wetland or water course or upland review area. There's no change to the building, to the footprint, to the access as approved in previous months. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the experts. I believe we're going to start with Ms. Monica to demonstrate compliance with the standards of Article 4, Section 27 regarding construction activity and oversight. I believe Mr. Richards and Mr. Tripp were in touch with Ms. Kramer today to ask that the reports and CVs of these experts, the, the material that you received back in March and April of this year be made part of the record of this hearing, just in case we need to refer to it either as a document or online. So at that, at this point, I will turn it over to Deborah Monica.
Promoted you to panelists, so you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, this is Deborah Monica Downey from Haley and Aldrich. I'm here, but I believe that Rob Danielson from Fussin' O'Neill is actually going to speak first.
Yes. So this is Rob Danielson for the record. I'm a hydrogeologist and vice president at the firm of Fussin' O'Neill in Manchester, Connecticut. I'm a licensed environmental professional with more than 30 years of experience evaluating subsurface conditions at various sites, including groundwater quality as well as methane migration. As you also heard, I'm here with Deb Monica. She's a hydrogeologist with Haley and Aldrich with more than 35 years of experience. She's a licensed environmental professional also, as well as for 14 years, a member of the inland wetlands commission in the town of Stonington, which she also chaired. And she is also a select one, a select woman in the town of Stonington. So as you recall, or may recall, we previously presented to this commission in connection with the proposed development, specifically with respect to environmental considerations that the developer had us review. Fussin' O'Neill was asked to evaluate the, whether there was a risk that methane from the closed landfill that abuts the site could somehow impact the construction or the building itself once built. And separately, Haley and Aldrich was asked to evaluate whether groundwater flow or groundwater quality was expected to be negatively impacted by the development and that would include any controlled blasting. It was a lengthy presentation and we do not intend to go through that plan in its entirety. Instead, I'm going to summarize the findings and then we're, we'll be available for questions. So based on numerous site visits, extensive methane testing, groundwater quality testing, measurements of groundwater flow, review of geologic data, review of hydrogeologic reports as well as other relevant publications. It was my opinion that they, any methane from the landfill, if it's present, would pose no risk to the development and that includes the construction and any blasting associated with it. With respect to the groundwater, Deb's professional opinion, based on a review of the same information, was that the proposed construction activities, including controlled blasting, would not significantly impact the groundwater flow or groundwater quality. We had arrived at these conclusions independently, but we also reviewed each other's reports and concurred with each other's conclusions. So with that, Deb and I are both available to answer questions from the commission on these specific topics.
Few questions at the end. It's going to be questions now. Is there a further presentation that you guys are applying to me?
Yeah, yes. Well, why don't we, why don't we just defer questions for the moment and proceed with the, the rest of the presentation?
Okay.
Is it Ted and Jeremy?
Yeah, I believe Ted is up. He needs to be let in, I believe.
Ted Von Rosenving, Catherine.
I promoted him to the, he just needs to accept.
Ted, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Give the Band-Aid in my upper lip. It's good to be back with you again. I'm not going to repeat everything I went through back at, when we made our initial presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions and kind of summarize. First of all, I'm a geotechnical engineer. I'm president, senior principal and one of the co-founders of GeoDesign, which is a Connecticut headquartered geotechnical specialty consulting firm. I have been engaged in, in this field for close to 40 years and have designed, personally designed and stamped sealed as a professional engineer blasting plans and reviewed many. My job here was to provide a specification to the developer so that the blasting would be performed if, if they chose to use blasting to remove rock as a, in a controlled manner. So I have done that and I've reviewed both the, the blaster's plans and I've been involved with this project since its inception. So I am not affiliated with a blasting contractor. I was hired by Metro Realty and to provide the third party geotechnical consulting. To this end, we provided a specification to the developer when they provided it to main drilling and blasting, the blasting contractor. My path has crossed with main drilling and blasting many times over probably 25 years. They're a well-known, experienced Connecticut licensed blaster with a long history, I believe over 50 years. And they, I can tell you their blasting plans compared to others I receive are models. They're very complete and they also conform with the town's provisions. The town's has, Farmington is unique. It's got its own special provision for blasting. And it's a very comprehensive regulation in my experience compared to others and that they have even more strict guidance than the state would require or general practice. And those specific guidelines cover decibels of sound, levels of vibration, which, and public notification. And the levels of vibration are three quarters of what the state would normally use or is used in general practice. So we've reviewed their plan. It is a pretty detailed, extensive plan, main drilling and blasting's plan. And it, I, I can attest to you that it conforms to our specification. They have addressed everything that we require in terms of their procedures, the charges per delay and that type of thing. And finally, it's also had a pass muster with a gas company, which is, is not a trivial thing. The gas company is very concerned about their facilities, as you might imagine. And they've given a rigorous review as of well, as well of the plan and reached same conclusions I have that they've got a, they got a safe, controlled blasting plan. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions, but I'm going to turn this over to Jeremy Carone. He's a representative from main drilling and blasting responsible for the plan. And he's also here to answer any questions that you may have. I, I would also just like to add, I didn't mention this in my qualifications, I, I appreciate what you do. I happen to be chair of my West, the Western Connecticut Conservation Commission. So appreciate the many long nights you spend at this type of thing. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy Carone.
Yeah, Ted, we, Jeremy's plan is on file, so we're, we're, we're available as a team to answer a question. So madam chair and commissioners, just to wrap up, this is under Article 4, Section 7. So we have five criteria to address under subsection C, which I'll just briefly run through. The first is, is there a feasible and prudent alternative to the plan? And the one that we've identified is called Ho-Ramming, which as Mr. Von Rosenving and others could say, is a much noisier method and would have a much more extended time period by several weeks at least than what we're proposing. So that's, we don't consider that feasible or prudent. Number two is proximity to residences. As you recall, that was reviewed and discussed at, at great length back in April, March and April of this year. There are, you know, there are some houses within 1,000 feet, but they are in considerable distances. Height elevations and the subsurface conditions, as Ms. Monica demonstrated, offer ample protection from vibration. The third criteria is presence of drinking water supply wells, again, addressed in detail by Ms. Monica. They are hundreds of feet away. The wells are upgraded from the proposed work and the aquifers are. are much, much deeper than the proposed excavation, which in terms of elevation is fairly modest. Four is likelihood of physical damage to structures. Again, addressed in detail, as you recall, several months ago. And finally, is the, the presence or proximity of material waste products, which is exactly what Mr. Danielson addressed in his remarks both months ago and summarized tonight. Twenty-seven D addresses performance standards, which are all addressed in the main drilling plan, M-E-I-N-E, company drilling plan and the the geotechnical report and tonight's presentation, dealing with technical matters like air pressure and ground motion. And finally, the applicant certainly agrees on the record to comply with sections twenty-seven E and F regarding monitoring, reporting, and pre-activity notifications and surveys. There are special permit criteria in Article Four, Section 12, which is referenced in the regulation. Those are generally more applicable to the zone, zone changes in site plans, and therefore, I think have already been heard and considered. So I'm not going to take the time to go through those. I think it's the criteria that are relevant are the ones that are in section twenty-seventh. So, Madam Chair, with that, that is our presentation. You have the development team, including Megan Raymond, our wetlands consultant, available for questions. And so we will stop there.
Thank you. For the record, this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience on Zoom that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application, please raise your hand on the Zoom, and you'll be recognized to make a comment.
Marjorie Shansky, you may now unmute yourself. Please address the commission with your name and address, please.
Thank you. Evening, my name is Marjorie Shansky. I'm at 61 East Grand Avenue in the beautiful Quinnipiac River Historic District in New Haven. I am Attorney Marjorie Shansky, and I represent Kimberly and Douglas Zaitunjin, who are the owners of 42 Pradling Pond Road in Farmington, which abuts the subject premises. Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. The Zaitunjins and I come with some very specific concerns this evening, particularly on the heels of the testimony that we've just heard. And the most unusual approach, which is to rely on testimony that was adduced in March and April to satisfy the applicant's burden of establishing eligibility for this permit only now requested in September. Counsel has not shared in this public hearing the fact that both of the decisions by this commission and the decision by the Inland Wetlands Commission are under appeal. So to rely on testimony that was adduced at a hearing, the procedures and substance of which are under appeal, is an interesting thing to contemplate. And it is also concerning, and one of the primary concerns that we have this evening is that if it is the intention, and we have no idea from our review of the plans, what the intention of the developer is with respect to opening up this site, which is the most ecologically damaging thing to do, particularly while the matters are under appeal. What is to become of this site, this ecosystem, the north-south wildlife corridor, the disruption to some, to the species around and about, some of whom are state listed, and all of which were described to this commission by Dr. Michael Clemens, the herpetologist, in his reporting and his testimony to this commission back in January. His report is dated January 17th, 2021. And I'd ask you to reflect on the content of his comments and his interest, not just in the very limited gaze at the wetlands and the issue of adverse impact or not with respect to the wetlands, but to the entire ecosystem, the direct connections north and south along this property, which are being interrupted by this development pattern. So as to timing, which is a big deal, and as to the notion of restoration, why are we now sitting here giving a go whistle to something in which the outcome is at best uncertain? Now, there are some other very specific observations that I want to make. The geotechnical engineer who commented that the blaster's plans comply with the town's provisions, I don't think so. First of all, while this isn't a direct reference to your provisions, and while the geotechnical engineer did say in his comments that the main blasting is licensed in Connecticut, on page five of their April 26 blasting report, it says, "All main drilling and blasting ink blasters on this job will be licensed in the state of New Hampshire, and we have received various amounts of training in the safe use and handling of explosives." I think it would be useful to have a representation about their Connecticut licensure. And then, this one is perhaps more poignant or as poignant. And I believe it's on page three of the blasting report, although it feels to me as though it may have been later. And it's in reference to the pre-blast surveying. Quote, "Well tests will consist of a baseline water quality test only." And I would contrast that with section twenty-seven F four of your regulations, the Farmington zoning regulations, which are the ones that matter in this conversation. Quote, "The survey shall include a test of water quality and quantity." Now, I don't think that we can look back at the March and April testimony and whatever general conclusions have been adduced and shared with the commission. This has to do with specific properties that are located within specific proximity to the proposed activity site. So I leave those to you as concerns, as palpable concerns emerging from your regulations on a special permit where the applicant has the burden of establishing their eligibility to get the permit, the burden is theirs. To this moment, they have not achieved that. And I, again, remind the commission, as you well know, the initial decisions are under appeal. Yes, counsel, I know there's no automatic stay, but I also know that the peril, the environmental peril, the ecological peril associated with this development is triggered and begins with the site disruption. And that is a function that is squarely before the commission this evening. And I appreciate the opportunity to share these comments with you. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, either in favor or opposition, please do so by raising your hand, and you'll be recognized.
Terry Corson, you may now unmute yourself, address the commission with your name and address. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Vincent Trantolo, and I am at Terry Corson's house. And I would like to speak to you about this issue. The first thing, question I think you should ask, Mr. Hollister, is what happens if you lose the appeal? And how does that affect the project? Both lawyers can address that, and I think that if they don't want to, you should be asking that question. I am also here to object to the issuance of this permit because it's premature. When these hearings were first held, Mr. Hollister and Metro spent a great deal of time telling the commission that they wanted to put this building up so that the residents could walk to the hospital and all the other medical buildings that existed along the way. Now, from my research, at this time, there's no written commitment by the state to put in the sidewalks. There has been no application filed, to my knowledge. The state hasn't even been out to the site. Now, it's possible people are going to tell you that, more likely than not, the state is going to agree to this. But then my answer is, what's the hurry? Let them complete the application. Let the state make the commitment. So unless all of the necessary commitments are done for this application and put in order, this permit should not be allowed or denied by them. The other thing is, is, and I'm sure they can answer these questions, is the insurance and bond requirements met? Are all other requirements met before this blasting occurs? Because once you blast a hole in the ground, it's like the genie, you can't put it back in the bottle. So the other question I had, and you may want to ask them, is if they were given permission, when do they intend to blast? And all the other questions regarding the effect of the appeal, and why don't we wait until the state gets involved and actually gives approval? Because then the very issue they raised becomes moot and affects the project. That's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition, please raise your hand on Zoom and identify yourself.
There is another Corson hand. You're welcome to unmute yourself. Please address the commission with your name and address. Thank you.
Hi Catherine, thank you. This is Craig Corson at 52 Pradling Pond Road. I should be putting up a fight against this application, but there's one thing I've learned the first six months of this year, is that this board doesn't really give a damn about protecting its residents. At this point, I don't want to say something I might regret. I wouldn't like it on the record that A, I'm strongly opposed to this blasting. B, I would like to have a one-month notice prior to any blasting and have an adequate water test performed on my own. And C, if God forbid, any damage is caused to my home, my well, my family or my belongings by the proposed blasting, I intend to make both the town and developer pay dearly. I'll end by thanking this entire board, with the exception of Mr. Paxton, for making me now hate living in a town I once loved. I'll end with, and I found it hard not to laugh at the previous, the previous hearing, that, you know, the board members said basically a three-car garage addition was out of character for a neighborhood, and that was enough to reject the permit. What you guys are doing to us in this neighborhood is, you should all be ashamed. But thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak, please raise your hand, you'll be recognized.
I am monitoring the Zoom function. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom function. I see no further hands raised at this point in time.
Given no further public comment, does the applicant have anything they'd like to add before we go on to the commissioners?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Attorney Tim Hollister. Let me respond to Attorney Shansky. First of all, I'm looking at the blasting plan dated April 26, 2021. And the version that I have in front of me on page five, under blaster qualification, says, quote, "All main drilling and blasting ink blasters on this job will be licensed in the state of Connecticut," unquote. Attorney Shansky, I'm not sure what you're reading from. I don't see a reference to New Hampshire, but the representation as to the proper qualification is already in the record. Second, I'm going to call a little bit of hypocrisy on the comments that were made, as Attorney Shansky agreed, because she has filed an appeal in court, or the Zaitunjins have, that doesn't prevent Metro from proceeding with obtaining other permits. But I would point out that Attorney Shansky faulted us for reaching back several months, and then she reached back to January to Dr. Clemens, and not only asked the commission to consider his testimony, but accepted, even though it was rejected by the Wetlands Commission and the Conservation Commission as a basis for denying the permit. So we seem to have a little bit of a disconnect there. Attorney Trantolo asked about the sidewalk. As the town is well aware, the approval process is in progress. The requirement legally, as a general matter, is that you get all necessary permits before you start your construction and your leasing. But the sidewalk approval is in process, and that's all what we need to do. And certainly, we have the right, as the applicant, to go ahead and get the remaining permits. Attorney Trantolo asked about bonding. Yes, bonding is always a part of these types of operations. It occurs, by the way, under the direct supervision of the Farmington Fire Marshal. And there are insurance and bonding and many other requirements, and the commission's own regulations, twenty-seven E and F, provide for, and this is Mr. Corson's question, provide for notifications, what are called pre-activity surveys. And certainly, if there were any damage, the responsible party would have to address the, address the issue, both financially and physically. As to when the commencement, when the development is going to commence, well, we're still getting permits. So we don't, we don't exactly have a construction schedule until we have all our permits. So we're sort of being faulted on the one hand for not having permits and and being asked when we're going to start construction, when we don't yet have all the permits. But certainly, our obligation is to inform the town and the neighborhood as to when we are ready to start, and we will do that. I will just, if there's anybody on the Metro team or the geotechnical experts that wants to add anything in response to what we just said, please do so, otherwise we'll wrap up. Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'll go to the commissioners for any questions you might have. Start with Patrick.
No, any, any questions that were presented by the Butters were answered, so I don't have any, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Matt, do you have any questions?
Questions for staff, for Catherine. Just to be clear, this is a more of a formality for us. Is that correct? We are bringing this as a public hearing so that we do vote on it. But let's just say theoretically, that everybody voted no tonight, and that we denied this. How would that stand? Because I'm just going to finish my thought. As far as I understand, this is really more of forewarning the neighbors about what, what's going to happen, and that this is really more of up to the fire marshal to make the final decision on. And it's really out of our hands. This is, again, just a formality. But can you clarify that for me?
Yes, so you're correct. By state statute, the fire marshal has jurisdiction over blasting permits. This process is monitored and enforced by the fire marshal. The TPZ, the planning process, is for added protection, for added notification. Just like you're seeing at this public hearing, it's providing opportunity for residents nearby or businesses nearby the location to get earlier warning about the activity that is being proposed and to provide opportunity for more input and information, as well as gaining the mandatory pre-blast survey. So this is an additional protection that the town of Farmington requests when seeking a regulation on intensive construction activities.
And would you be able to tell me what would happen, again, theoretical, if everybody was to vote no right now, what would, what would occur?
I haven't been through that process before, so I would not be, I would have to reach out and talk to the fire marshal and the town attorney at that point in time.
Okay. Also, I don't know if you've been through this procedure as well, but I know that this is going through other litigation outside of the town. You know, there are other lawsuits involved now. Is that something that has any concern with this permitting? Or do we need, I mean, they brought that up. Some of the Butters have brought that up. But is that something that this permit should wait until those items have gone through the court? Like, sort of like when we have to wait to hear from Inland Wetlands Commission on decisions? Or is that something that we can go ahead with? Are we Or is that something that we can go ahead with? Are we jumping the gun, cart before the horse here?
Historically, that's not the practice. Historically, the developer will seek out all of the permits they will need to start and
During the appeal.
Yeah, during the appeal, so that once the process and the appeal is done, they're ready to go. I will also state, it was brought to our attention, and it was brought up in the public comment, the comments about the sidewalk, and that is something that the town has been in contact with the state. And the state is on board with the sidewalks, and there is no hesitation from the state as far as moving that forward. So from a permitting perspective with the state, town staff does not have any concern regarding that. And this is also in line with the framework and process for obtaining permits prior to construction when there is an appeal.
My final question is just, if this, say that there's this appeal, let's say they win the appeal, even though they've been, let's say tonight, they're granted this blasting permit from us, that doesn't matter, the blasting permit doesn't matter, because the appeal will override that blasting permit. Is that correct, technically?
Technically, that's correct. That's my understanding as well.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that as well, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hi, Nace.
Thank you. And Catherine, actually, I guess I'll start with you, sorry, to kind of continue. Have we heard of Main Drilling and Blasting, or had we, as a town, have, excuse me, any experience with that company?
Town staff has received blasting applications from them in the past.
Okay, great. And I don't, I think that no one is available for Main Drilling and Blasting. But I was, and I think this was covered, I just don't remember all the details. But I was hoping to ask about their experience, or they have done similar-sized projects. Does anyone know, or can I answer?
This is Jeremy with Main Drilling and Blasting. I can answer that.
Okay, sorry. I don't know. For some reason, I didn't think you were on. Thank you.
No, no, no problem at all. Just real quick background about Main Drilling and Blasting. Started in 1966 up in the state of Maine. And over the last 55 years, it has grown all throughout the eastern seaboard. So we do drilling and blasting activities as far south as North Carolina, all the way up to the, to the Canadian border, all along the eastern seaboard. We currently employ about 500 people, and we do over 1,000 blasts a year throughout the northeast part of the country. And a project like this is, and this isn't, this isn't trying to be simplistic, but a project like this is a pretty vanilla project for us. It's a standard development, and we've done literally hundreds of these in the last 55 years.
I'm assuming there's some, you keep track of these projects, and there's a safety record that is in place?
Yes, and we have our own safety policies and safety standards. Obviously, in this type of business, you know, safety is our priority first and foremost. But additionally, you know, for us to be able to bid certain work in other projects, we have to be able to maintain safety standards for regulators and other folks that may need to be able to see our safety performance.
Awesome. Thank you. And just for the record, just want to add a comment that I'm proud to be an elected official volunteer, and I choose Farmington every day. Thank you.
Marcy, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you, Barbara.
Scott, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Keith, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
John, do you have any questions?
Yes. First of all, let me just say that I'm very impressed with the experts that have come forward and testified about the safety of the plan that's being put forward. It seems like they're very credentialed, and they've laid out the most likely, most likely plan, which is no damage to other people. With that said, my question is, is if the unlikely occurs and that someone missed something, and when the blasting occurs, there is damage, what's the consequence? And along those same lines, is there testing that will be done after the blasting to see if wells, in fact, weren't affected?
This is Tim Hollister. The town's own regulations, 27 E and F, I think, address that. Yes, there's testing and verification and surveys before and after. And that's really what you're looking for, is the condition of the properties that you're dealing with and the adjacent properties before the construction and after the construction. So yes, that's, there's absolutely monitoring and surveys and responsibility at both ends of that process. And that's in your, that's in your regulations. And of course, will be supplemented by the oversight of the fire marshal and, you know, the law of insurance, if there were damage that, you know, implicated an insurance policy. But I think Main Drilling and Blasting has a pretty good record on that score.
So with that, that testing that would occur afterwards, if in fact there was damage, is there appropriate insurance in place to cover the homeowners?
Jeremy, can you address that? Your insurance, your insurance coverage?
Yes, there is. We will have to provide that policy to the town of Farmington for the fire marshal's review. So the fire marshal will be able to see that we have more than sufficient insurance for this project or any other project in the town of Farmington.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. At this point, I would like to have a motion from the commissioner.
This is Ina St. James. I make the motion to approve the application from 402 Farmington, LLC for special permit for blasting to construct multifamily development at lots 40 and 40B1 Farmington Avenue, also known as 8231 and 9249 Farmington Avenue to the rear of 406 Farmington Avenue, SIF Zone, as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Patrick Carrier, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstention?
Matt Pogson, I abstain.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you. Move on to the planners' report, please.
Good evening, everyone. I want to notify you all of a building permit application. There's been some discrepancy between how planners in the past have dealt with updates or modifications to sites that are, you know, up to date with all their permits. But I just wanted to notify you that there is a building permit application for replacement of one of the pavilions at Winding Trails. It's changing from 24 by 36 to 36 by 60. Often, we see these types of updates or revisions come through as accessory dwelling, you know, or accessory structure permits. But when it comes to winding trails, this has been historically managed administratively. So I just wanted to notify all of you that I was going to continue to do that administratively unless there were concerns or questions about updates or modifications to the site plan at Winding Trails. The increased pavilion size is to help accommodate better events and larger group activities, so.
This is Barbara Brenman. The only question I have is, do they do a demolition permit first?
So I think it's just, I don't believe it's needed. It's not, there's no walls to it. It's an open pavilion. It's on a concrete slab. We're working with their architect and engineer to do the roof leaders and make sure that infiltration is all done well. As we're all probably aware, there can be flooding on that area, so wanting to make sure that it's all done right, so.
The only thing I'd be concerned with at Winding Trails would be if they were taking a building down. I would think because of the amount of wetlands, you'd have to have a permit, and you'd have a different process to put a new building up, I would think.
Correct.
But with the open pavilions, seems
Yeah, they fall into this kind of
Flood through.
Gray zone, which is why I'm bringing it up to you guys. It's not necessarily something that would go through that formal process, but it is a modification to their site.
Well, it's also informing the commissioners of activity that's going on in town that somebody in the community might ask them about.
Yep.
So, thank you for that. Anything else in the planners' report?
So I just wanted to touch upon the fact that we are all still remote. I appreciate everyone bearing with the town staff and the town and this whole pandemic that we're dealing with and maintaining professionalism and being present at these meetings while we continue to be remote. I know we were hopeful that we would be back in person for September. But due to the ever-changing environment and the fact that we still have dividers up in the council chambers, it makes it really hard for us to see plans. And the screens aren't necessarily located in a way that is productive for viewing and discussing these sorts of projects. So I'm working with the town manager to help figure out a plan that we can hopefully bring people back in person in a safe manner. So thank you, guys, for all bearing with us and for continuing to do a great job of meeting online via Zoom.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yep.
We'll go to a motion.
I have a quick question. Is the town hall, is it open or is it like limited access?
Town hall is open. It's, outsiders, we wear masks in all public spaces and working with anyone in the public.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Another little thing, just, this is Matt Pogson speaking. I have unfortunately had a lot that has gone on over the course of the last few months. And I am unfortunately not going to be able to continue doing this. So tonight was my last meeting, and unfortunately, I have to resign from the commission. I appreciate all the time, and I hope that in the future I can serve the town again. But at this time, I have to prioritize other issues. So I have to resign. I apologize for, you know, leaving you guys like this. But I will be sending in a formal resignation in the coming week. But I really did appreciate working with all of you. So thank you for your time, and I hope that I get to see you all around town in the future.
Pat, Matt, we do thank you for your service to the community and regret your resignation at this time. But hope in the future you have the opportunity to serve in this or another capacity. Thank you for your service.
Matt, congratulations. I'm sure that decision was not easy. And I was so impressed. I was at a business meeting the other day that's hosted by Economic Development, and your family has been farming and active in town for 100 years. That's pretty cool. So thank you personally to you and your family, and best wishes.
Thank you.
You, everyone.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
We need a motion on the minutes of the July 26 meeting, please.
Matt.
Well, I move to accept the minutes from that meeting.
Thank you, Matt. It's Ina St. James. I second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. It is now a little after nine, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, everybody.